That's fine. All right. Good evening. Welcome to the special meeting closed session of the Board of Directors of the Kensington Police Protection and Community Services District. I am Board President Rochelle Sheris-Watt, and I'll take roll call. Sylvia Hasai, present. Eileen Natoli.
Here.
Len Welsh.
Here.
And Director Vanessa Cordova will be calling in into the closed session from her location in Italy. We will take any public comments on items on our closed session agenda. If there are none at this time, we will adjourn. Sorry, Rochelle. No, no, it's good. It's fine, it's fine.
You have to add a recording.
Exactly, no, it's no problem.
Thank you.
Sure. Always happy. Good evening. We're going to begin. Welcome to the open session of the Thursday, January 26, 2017, meeting of the KPPCSD. I am Board President Rochelle Sheris-Watt. I will now take roll call. Director Welsh.
Here.
Director Hasai.
Here.
Director Cordova.
Hello.
Here.
Thank you. And Vice President Natoli.
Here.
All right. We had finished with closed session, and we have nothing to report out this evening. Moving on, we will now, and I'm sorry, it's a special, I should have said special meeting, I hope I reiterated that, thank you. We will now accept public comments for any issues not on the agenda. Okay, wonderful. Board, sorry.
Don't you do that.
No, no, it's all right. We can move right on if you have something for not appearing on the agenda. Okay.
Now? In my opinion, the most important function of the Board of Directors is to provide the necessary services for which it has been constituted, and to do so in the most economical way possible in order to keep the district on a strong financial footing. This means more than just balancing the budget each year. It requires the Directors and the GM appointee to look for ways to reduce costs and to anticipate the budget, anticipate and budget for costs in the years ahead. How has the district been doing in handling our finances? While we do not have the final audit for 1516, it looks like we could have a modest budget surplus for the second year, thanks to rising property values and housing turnover. At present, I would estimate that our unassigned fund balance probably stands at 1.3 million, and assuming we need to maintain a reserve of about 800,000, that leaves us with around 500,000 of truly available funds. That's the good news. But the concern is that last year, our unfunded pension liability increased by 515,000 and is expected to increase by another 700,000 this year because CalPERS failure to reach its investment target in 2016. That amounts to a total increase in our unfunded liability of 1.2 million in just two years, or a two-year increase equal to our total available reserves. These unfunded liabilities are a deferred tax, sometimes called an intergenerational tax, because these costs are passed on to future generations of Kensington taxpayers. And starting last year, a new Gatsby rule requires reporting these unfunded liabilities on our balance sheet. These unfunded liabilities would not be of great concern if we could count on CalPERS making a 7.5% return or greater on their investments. But as I warned the Board two years ago, such expectations are unrealistic. Even CalPERS has announced a gradual reduction in their investment target, which translates into more of these pension costs falling on the taxpayer. Because the district has $10 million invested with CalPERS, this means that for every 1% that the 7.5% target is lowered, taxpayer costs rise by $100,000 annually. Bringing the target down to what I believe would be a more realistic 5% would mean that the district's pension costs could rise by $250,000 annually. That's enough to wipe out any chance of a real budget surplus, given our existing police operations. And this only speaks to the pension problem. Then there are rising medical costs, the additional money needed to complete the community center retrofit, and the cost to relocate the police during the renovation of the public safety building. While you did not create these problems, you inherited them. Therefore, I believe that starting now, the mantra of the Board needs to be on cost control. I would encourage you to make cost control a key part of any new Board policy in your policy manual, as well as a fundamental component of a new GM job description. Otherwise, don't expect Kensington taxpayers to pass another Measure G to bail out the district. Thank you.
All right. Any more comments? All right. Okay, we'll move on to Board and Staff comments. Just a reminder, you don't have to be too close to the microphone, because it's a little bit, it is a little echoey in here and can be quite loud. Okay. Board?
None at this time.
Vanessa? Do you have any comments?
No.
Okay. I have a couple. Just to note, the deadline for involvement in a KPPCSD committee has been extended to February 8. That application appears on our website, and if you need, or if you need a copy, you're welcome to email me, and we can, it was in last month's agenda as well, or, I'm sorry, not last month's, the previous January meeting's agenda. All right. Staff comment? Okay. Go ahead. Sure.
Do you want me to post on the, sorry, post on the website that we're extending that deadline?
It is already there. It should have been updated as of Monday, so. Okay, perfect, thank you. Yes. All right. Okay, we're moving on to new business, and we're going to have a presentation from the Park Building Committee representative regarding Glass &amp; Associates' proposal. So if you want to come forward, Paula, I'm happy, or if you're waiting, are you waiting for, okay. Just to begin, give a little background for those of you that don't know, the synopsis that appeared in our December 8 agenda, there are a few copies on the back table, if you hadn't read it previously. The KPPCSD Park Building Committee has been working since 2015 in ascertaining what improvements need to occur on this building. On October 5 of 2016, the committee reviewed presentations from five architectural firms in response to an RFP we had released in July. The committee saw architects interested in preparing drawings and construction documents for improvements to this building. These improvements are in response to findings of an accessibility report, or an ADA survey, essentially, and a seismic study, both completed in 2000, late 2015. The Park Building Committee made unanimous decision to recommend Glass &amp; Associates to you tonight, and member Paula Black will explain.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah.
Is that too loud? Okay. The committee was delighted, I think, to have five very good proposals from five excellent groups of architects in response to an RFP that had been issued by the KPPCSD. And I think the quality and the number of the responses that we got was a testament to both the committee's efforts, and in particular, to Director Sheris-Watt's hard work and commitment to this process in putting out a really excellent RFP and encouraging proposals, which meant that as a committee, we had, you know, we really had a range of choice, which was a good position to be in. So in addition to ensuring that the architects that had applied met the basic bar of qualifications and experience in dealing with buildings like this, and in dealing with the kind of upgrades that we need, the committee considered a number of other, we really placed value on a number of other criteria. And perhaps before I go any further, should I explain that the upgrades that are required to this building are necessary in order to meet American with Disabilities Act's requirements, and to seismically upgrade the building for safety reasons? So that's the core of the mission that we're undertaking in terms of upgrading this building. Anything aesthetic, oh, and the other key priority that we have is ensuring a functioning kitchen. Anything aesthetic that we're doing above and beyond that will be a question of whether or not the budget allows. So in addition to meeting the bar of experience, as I said, and qualifications from the architects, as a committee, we placed value on a number of qualities. One was, we were looking for a larger team of architects. Given that we have a very tight timetable in order to complete the upgrade of the building and qualify for our Measure WW funding, we really wanted to ensure that we had an architectural team where there was a certain amount of backup if the principal that we were dealing with was unable to complete the work, for whatever reason, that we wouldn't run the risk of changing architects partway through. So the two of the five architects who put forward who were single practitioners, we felt were a risk in that sense. We also focused on having, giving value to teams that had familiarity with the building. And Glass &amp; Associates were far and away the ones who had the most familiarity with the building. The principal architect that we would be dealing with actually has worked in the building a lot, running cooking courses for KSEP. So we couldn't have asked for someone who was more understanding of the sort of nitty-gritty of this space. We also, obviously, the key item we looked at was pricing, not just in terms of the overall price, but in having confidence that we had architects who had been very realistic and very honest with us about the price. Again, one of the strengths of Glass &amp; Associates, from our point of view, was that they had put forward a price that included a larger proportion of time than any of the other architects had budgeted for supervising the construction works. And we had a long discussion, and they were very helpful, about explaining realistically what the architect needs to do in terms of supervising the contractor and being available on site. And given the nature of a client that we are, we thought that was particularly important. The other issue that we, the two remaining sort of value, items that we really sort of valued, was having confidence that the architects have an understanding of the complexity of the codes that will apply to this building and how they interact. So we've got to deal with the nitty-gritty of ADA requirements, we have to deal with the logistics of a seismic upgrade, we are all the time trying to make sure that we're doing what is required, but not accidentally triggering something that we inadvertently requires further work and incurs further cost. And it was clear to us that Glass &amp; Associates, that the principals we were dealing with just had an encyclopedic knowledge of the codes that would apply to this building, and that gave us tremendous confidence. And finally, and I think as a committee, we thought this was the most important thing, and Katie Gluck, who's here tonight, who's on our committee, was really helpful at articulating this, is that we need architects who are really going to listen to us. We want them to be bringing their own ideas, we want them to be bringing their expertise, but we need to have confidence that they have understood what our requirements are, and that first and foremost, they're meeting our requirements and our needs and what our community wants, before they're starting to add too many of the ideas that they have. And again, we felt that this was the team that had really understood what we'd asked for in the RFP, had clearly really understood what the committee and what the Board was looking for. I know that all the applicants had done at least one, sometimes two tours of the building with Director Sheris-Watt, and that this was the team that we were really confident had understood what our priorities, what our constraints, our timeframe, and the logistics of dealing with a public body, with all the pros and cons that we bring to it in terms of being a community as a client, that these were the architects that we really felt were going to do the best job.
Any questions already? Board questions? Nothing.
I have a couple.
Mm-hmm.
So I, one thing I noticed here is that they, when they broke out the different costs, they sort of, actually, they didn't break them out as much as I would like to have seen. They sort of lumped the consulting service of the architect along with the subconsulting services and gave a single fee. And I'm kind of thinking it'd be nice to know what the different, what they estimate the different subcontractors they plan to rely on, the mechanical engineer, and there were several others, what their estimated costs would be. And I'm wondering if we would be able to get that. Because, you know, there's a lot assumed there, and, you know, I just want to have some sense that they really can be specific about how they came to this estimate. That's one. The other is, I note here that the third bullet, right on the second page there, talks about sort of add-on type things they might help us do to this building, above and beyond the basic seismic upgrade and the minimal, the legally necessary ADA requirements. There's alternate one, alternate two, alternate three. And those alternates are not factored into the estimate they gave of the project costing overall a million dollars or less. And I'm wondering if we have any sense of what those things might cost. That's second thing. The third, and I don't, you know, not saying necessarily these questions have to be answered tonight, but I'm concerned about.
Could I answer the first two before we get into the third one, in case?
All right.
My answers will add.
Go ahead.
So I know in terms of the subcontracting, that the different architects presented different breakdowns, so, and we had gone back and asked for further information in relation to the pricing, but we did compare, while some of the architects had broken down in great detail how they had come to their subcontracting sum, and others had just given us a lump sum, they were all ballpark, so we had confidence that they had covered off similar items, you know, they were not outliers. We can always ask for further clarification on that, but I think we were pretty confident that what they'd listed out covered the subcontractors that were required and was a reasonable figure, given what the others had provided. And bearing in mind that at the end of the day, they give us a firm price in terms of the subcontracting, as long as we have a list of what they're covering, we are insulated from, you know, any mistakes they might have made in receiving their bids or their pricing. And then I think your second question was about the three options. So the way that the RFP was structured was they were asked to give a price on a base option, and then were asked to, actually, I'm going to let Director Sheris-Watt.
They didn't price the add-ons.
We didn't ask them, we didn't ask anyone to, we said that they needed to be prepared, and it was very helpful for us at the presentations to hear the different ideas that different architects brought to those three different options. We didn't want the architects to go to the effort and the work of ideating and pricing out those three options, when we really are not sure whether they're things we can afford, that's something we're going to be working with them, we've achieved, if you like, the baseline.
Well, I guess, so the question I have is, are these really realistic at this point? I mean, are we contemplating any of these three options, or are these just sort of something we were talking about before? Because it seems to me that if we were going to go for any of these, we would want to know that as the project starts, because it might be, you know, if the project gets to a certain point, it might be too late to sort of add them on. So I'm just wondering, at what point do we figure out whether we're interested in any of these alternates?
Okay, so the alternates, in some ways, we were looking at them as sort of mix-ins in what the architects would present, so that the new west wall, we know that we're going to have to make some changes to make it seismically safe, and that can involve adding additional glass and possibly making it more of an indoor/outdoor. So we were hoping that they would come to us sort of with the idea that enhancement went with size, with the basics, so that as you, what could they suggest as we have to essentially gut the restrooms in terms to get the space needed for ADA requirements? And when we put them back together, what can we afford, what can we add on, how can we make these more attractive or better functioning for the building? So it was kind of all part and parcel, I don't want to, so, but we didn't want to mandate too much, because we were looking for their innovation and their creative spark to think outside the box for us. We didn't want to say, we want X, Y, and Z lest we get something much less, we're not architects, we want something more than, so what we could come up with.
Does that answer your question?
Well, not entirely. I mean, I'm just trying to figure out, when do we make this decision about, because it's a pricing decision, it's a, you know, fiscal decision, and we just got a nice lecture from Jim about how we need to be cost-conscious and all that, so, let me just finish first, okay? So, I mean, that's really what I want to get a sense of, is at what point do we confront these options and say yea or nay?
Okay. Do you want to add to the question? Sure, come on up. Go ahead and introduce yourself.
Yeah, I'm happy to bow out at this point, does that make sense?
Very good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm going to take this off, because I, okay, there we go. My name is Farhat Dowd, and I'm with Glass Associates. We were one of the firms that presented to the Parks Committee, and a lot of you may recognize me from the December 8 meeting, when we came and talked to you all. So I wanted to just add to that, so the three options, you know, pretty much most of them, they will be considered right from the front, because they're very much integrated. The things to do with the bathroom and the west wall, and I think some things were like lighting and upgrading of the heating and all that, so that will fall under energy, all of that, and then the bathrooms will fall under the ADA requirement. So anytime you make upgrades to your project, which is, I think, upwards of $125,000 worth of work, it triggers the ADA, and the seismic and the energy are, you will not be able to get a permit unless you bring that stuff up to code. So basically, you're looking at all of it from the beginning, and I think the only, I'm sorry, just refresh my memory on what, everything's that were listed for the.
Well, I'm just trying to figure out, they're not priced, those options are not priced, so how are we going to be able to make a decision about them unless we know what the total cost is going to be?
So do you mean after, you know, you start doing the work and you get an estimate, or you get a design for the structural and that kind of thing, or do you mean the fees required to consider those things?
Trying to get an idea of what this thing is going to cost us, okay? So we've got these three alternates, which we may want to do, but they're not priced. So it's hard for me to make a decision to go forward if I don't know what the potential cost is of each of these things.
Okay, so let me just clarify, cost to me means two things. First of all, it's cost meaning construction budget. How much is it going to cost you to put in all that stuff? And then again, how much is it going to cost you to pay the architect to design that stuff?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so that's the one you're referring to? Both. Okay, so in our proposal at least, we, those things are just, it's built in, so it's built into our fee proposal, and if there's any additional add-ons, like say you say, oh, we want to add a whole nother room over there, then that would be something that is not in the original scope.
All right, but that's not what it says. It says at the end of that thing that these are, or it says at the beginning, these following alternates that will be priced separately and may or may not become part of the final project. So it's the, it's not having the price that's making me want to ask you, what do you think it's going to be?
Oh, well, so to understand, we will do improvements on the west wall, but these alternates, I think, as they presented, they thought about it, and we thought about it, it's degree. Are we going with all glass in that front window, or are we just going with slightly expanded? So those, you know, slightly larger doors that then suit ADA requirements, those will absolutely affect end cost, they don't affect the fees that Glass &amp; Associates charges us. Will we go for a full upgraded kitchen, that, you know, should we have had the money to do that? We, if that was part of the consideration, that will be something we're going to explore, but teasing out where we want to spend our dollars, if we have them, beyond the ADA and the seismic, will going to be a matter of community involvement and discussion. So these alternates, we didn't ask anyone to price these out specifically, because we weren't giving them exact details. We were still, we're still in the planning of the stages.
Ciara?
Ciara Wood. I'm not, I'm.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hi there, I'm Ciara Wood, I was also on this committee. Right now, we're talking about engaging this design firm. The price of what they design to build it is based on a design that has not yet been created. So right now, I think you're looking at the cost of engaging this firm to do this planning.
Well, the cost is $150,000 approximately, what they're estimating for their fees, okay? Now, I thought I heard her just say that there's two cost items associated with these alternates. One is the extra fee they will have to charge if we engage them for any of these alternates. Is that wrong? Is these built in?
That's incorrect, yeah, for those, well, for, when we, when we look at it, yeah, we're going to consider those with you. So it, our fee is including looking at and designing for those alternates.
And so if we go for them, will your fee include that as well?
Yes, it will include anything, you know, to, including those to bring the drawing.
It doesn't say that, I mean, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't clearly say. I mean, as I look at this language, it says, will be priced separately, and I assume that priced separately applies to everything, your fee as well as your estimate of the cost of the.
Okay, that, that means that what we can do for you is, we can phase the, we can structure the drawings so that if you decide, okay, we can't afford to put in full doors here, or we don't know that if we can afford the full. here, or we don't know that if we can afford the full doors. The base, the base set of drawings that we can come up for you is basically the minimal you will need to get this project permitted. Now, the things that are going to add cost to you are, instead of just replacing these windows straight out, would be to add full doors. Okay, that's a big cost. Now, so basically, the things that add cost are going bigger and going better.
But can I clarify, when you're talking about adding costs, you're not talking about adding costs for the work you're doing?
Exactly.
You're talking about adding costs for actual construction?
For actual construction. We don't, we don't know what those numbers are until we come up with the drawings. And we can structure the drawings in such a way that it's clear to you that, you know, you can add, you can do what's called a bid alt. So that when the contractors bid, they have line items, so they'll do the base bid, which would be just like replacing these windows. And then there would be an add alt. How much extra is it going to cost those contractors for labor and materials to put in the full windows? So you know where your dollars are coming in at. For our fee, it's going to include all of those things that you're looking at.
I would like to see that stated a little more clearly. That's, I guess, my point. And the only other question I had was the timing of this. When do we get to the point where we have to start deciding whether we're going to go for the extra stuff?
Well, I mean, when we, when we do the design, you guys would have the say-so in terms of how nice finishes you want to go, and we'll guide you with that. And that's the thing that, you know, usually is the, is the kind of the factor that changes. And then we'll, what we do usually is we get the drawings done and we do, we get enough done, like a DD set, and we can get pretty accurate numbers, or it's like, you know, 50% construction set, something like that. We can get pretty accurate numbers for bids to start coming in.
Okay, so I'm just asking for a ballpark. When would we expect us to be, ourselves to be presented with, okay, it's time to make a decision about these options? Can you ballpark that a little bit?
I'm happy to...
Yeah, Rochelle, I think you have the...
So we had a timeline. We're looking at a final end date of December 2018 for this to be finished, complete, so that we recoup our Measure WW funds, which we've put in for. So we were hoping, we had discussed that to lessen impact on KCC, that we would be doing the community discussion and design process throughout the spring, and that we would hope that we could begin or start thinking about actually doing construction, maybe in the window between camp and the fall session, so that we can kind of lessen as much impact or get ahead as we can, as far ahead as we can. So we, the board, you know, will be presented probably during the summer. We will start talking about real numbers, and hopefully we'll have progressed and move forward by then, so during the summer.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, Vanessa. Director Cordova.
There's a five-second delay, so just hang tight with me here. But I wanted to mention that I worked for the Marin County Department of Parks, so I know parks and park planning. And first, I want to commend the committee for their, which really has produced this really, emphasize Ms. Wood's point that this is, you know, while I recognize Lynn's concern, and I think it's about their design yet, so it's very hard, items cost for a design that does not yet exist. That's not uncommon in park planning. This item is to engage this design services class, so this is not uncommon to me, but I certainly understand the concerns, and I very much appreciate the time and effort that went into the selection of this particular vendor, mostly because the Parks Committee is a very skilled and cross-section of the community, and I think that will ensure that by the time we cultivate community engagement in the planning process via a charrette or whatever approach you elect, that we'll have a robust feedback that will really allow us to come up with a more cogent cost approach to sort of address the... I feel quite comfortable with this, and I appreciate you bringing it back again, Rochelle, with a very thorough presentation. So thank you, and thank you to the Parks Committee and to your architects there.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Jim?
Don't get too close, I know. I'd actually like to respond to Lynn's questions because I think they're very good ones, and I thought that we actually had an understanding on this. I happen to also have been on the Parks Building Committee. However, I was out of the country when the decision was made to pick Glass. When Glass's first proposal came in, they did not include the costs of bringing in a cost estimator, and so we went back, asked them to include that, and that's, that cost has been included in the bid that's before you. And the reason for that answers, I think, your question, and that is this. When we put together our proposal for these architects, we asked them to first present to us the work that would be required to bring this building up to seismic and ADA requirements. But then, at that time, we thought that we would probably have some excess money, which we could then apply to some additional upgrades, and so we put some alternatives into that proposal. And the purpose of having that cost estimator, which is included in your bid proposal, I believe you're using MAC 5, is that that cost estimator is going to take a look at the alternate schemes that the architect, that Glass comes up with, one for the wall and probably one for other upgrades within this building. And he is going to apply his best understanding as to what these costs are going to be before full working drawings are prepared. That's very costly for an architect to do that. And we will then be able to look at the cost of doing the essential requirement, requirements together with the potential of also doing these add-ons based upon their cost estimates, estimates number, their cost estimators, numbers. So that was how that was supposed to work. So by the time, before they actually get into final working drawings, we expect to see from them a plan showing essential work and the alternative work and the estimated costs of that. And if it looks like we can afford the extra work, then we will ask them to put that into their final working drawings, and we will bid it that way. So that was the plan. Now, I have one other question that I would like to ask and would like to get an answer to, and that is that, and this was raised by Bart Jones, who was a local architect here, that you have put into your proposal to us on page 18, contained in the packet, which doesn't help you any, it's under the schedule, that the construction administrative phase services will be, you will handle that on a schedule not to exceed 20 weeks. And we, and I know Bart has a problem with this, and I do too. 20 weeks is five months. So basically, what you're saying is that the construction of this building, if it exceeds five months, any additional administrative oversight on your part will be an add-on. And you were the only architect to put a time constraint on that. And what Bart Jones has proposed, our local architect, is that there should be no limitation placed on this unless that those costs are because of some, something that has to do with the KPP delaying this thing. But once that construction gets started, you put in $39,000, which on 20 weeks runs the cost of $2,000 a week, to oversee the construction of this building, and we think that you should oversee the construction of that building through its entirety. So that's, maybe you'd like to respond to that?
I know she will, and Farhat and I had already actually discussed this because this was a point that we knew was not typical and not typical for their projects. So you can go ahead and begin.
Yeah, I think that clause actually addresses that fact that you said, I don't know where he went, but there you are. Basically, if the construction, we think it's going to take five months, but if it takes longer, we'll, you know, we'll certainly work that in. We want to see the construction through. We're not going to leave you high and dry and say, "Oh, now you got to pay us more because you've got..." You know, it's basically for extraordinary circumstances. If there's some delay that's beyond kind of, you know, our control, either on the county's part, or we find something, we get into construction and we find there's some crazy thing happening underground and everything's going to be halted, or this or that. But basically, we're going to provide CA through the full length of the construction.
That's just something that can be clarified and altered in the final?
Yes, and I think we could...
Yeah, I mean...
If you make a motion for approval, we can, what's your, what the motion, what we're asking for tonight is a resolution that I execute a contract on behalf of the board, I negotiate a contract with Glass and Associates, and we certainly can add an addendum that schedule item four is altered to reflect the length of construction.
Okay.
Yeah.
Hello, my name is Nick Bo Cage. I'm a local, and I'm also a civil engineer, and structural engineering is my profession. I am against signing this contract. I don't like it. I don't like the way that this whole project has been sold to us on the basis that it's primarily for seismic retrofit and ADA upgrades, when from the request for proposal, it seems obvious that it's for a bunch of additions as well, so the commercial kitchen, redoing this wall. And I don't feel that the community has really been approached for what the community wants for this project. Now, this project is up to $1 million with $150,000 fee, which I see is very steep. I also see on here that, in my eyes, it seems like every service that is being provided is being farmed out to a different subconsultant, and that seems weird to me. I also noticed that they've got their own structural subconsultant for the structural engineering, who is not the engineer that we used. And so I'm wondering how the board or the Parks District plans to use the information we already paid for, for our seismic retrofit. The evaluation and retrofit was specifically contracted for, and I don't feel that the construct, that those documents are complete, and I don't feel that they're usable for this project either. And I keep hearing about the complexity of this building and these different issues, especially down to our community's design, like all of the, our once-in-dreams. I believe at the December 8 meeting, she mentioned down to the placement of a toothbrush holder. I think we're looking for a more, for a less intricate design, let's say. And from a structural engineering point of view, this is a very simple building, not a complex building. I just really don't agree with so much of everything that I'm hearing. It just seems fluffed up and added on to. And we talked about the complexity of the different codes, and I don't see it. Specifically, we asked for the ASE 4113 evaluation and retrofit, and I'm suspicious that we're going to be getting a California Building Code voluntary seismic improvement. I don't know what the required upgrades are. As far as I know, there are no mandates for us to make changes, and so these are voluntary seismic improvements, and so they're not required. Said that about 100 times to different people, and it never seems to get through to anybody I guess, I was on the Park Buildings Committee for a few meetings, and I quit when I found out that the architect whose advice they were taking explicitly is not an architect, and most of the information that they were dead-set on not reversing was wrong, and just not, not smart. So I really think that we should not sign this contract and not participate in all of this. I guess that's it.
Okay. Just a minute, I just want to speak to, I mean, you're welcome to sit down, or I just want to speak to a few things. First, to clarify, I, unfortunately, you were never on the Park Buildings Committee. Director Welsh offered to appoint you, but we then understood that you're El Cerrito resident and were not eligible. So we do appreciate your coming and your involvement, but you were technically never on the committee.
So I'm a Kensington resident, and it wasn't El Cerrito, it was Pleasant Hill, and I was only there for a short time. I've been back for a very long time.
Oh, that's wonderful.
You're right, I wasn't talking about being a board member. I was talking about participating in the meetings as a committee member.
Okay, wonderful. That's wonderful. You just said committee member is what I heard, and maybe that's an echo in here and not...
I don't understand the politics, but I do understand the structural engineering.
Okay. I can explain what we're looking to do are some very simple improvements. The reason that we focus on ADA is because we want to make this building accessible to all ages and disabilities. Also, it's a potential liability for this board because if you are out of compliance with ADA, it's very easy to be the recipient of a lawsuit. The other very basic need we have is for no one to be crushed in the event of an earthquake. And this building is used day in and day out for all ages, especially small children. And so as it functions primarily for groups and large groups, we wanted to make sure that it met the minimum standards of life safety and that should there be an earthquake, that we could evacuate the building and no life would be lost.
Okay, well, the documents you had filled out were not for life safety, they were for immediate occupancy, and so I guess your engineer that you hired did it wrong?
Well, I'm not going to debate that right now, but...
Well, I was just trying to talk to you back about the things you're talking to me about.
Okay. The committee did not mandate that a particular architect use our previous seismic engineer. Some did, some did not. That was up to their preference. We did not specify subcontractors for any architect because we wanted them to work with the people that they relied on, felt functioned and well for them, and whose professional reputation they respected. So I think that answers it.
I just want to say, you know, I, some of the points he's raising, I think are potentially legitimate, but, you know, we, I think, you know, I was part of that committee, so I have to take some of the blame for some of the, you know, if there are deficiencies. Nothing is ever perfect, right? Can't let the good or the perfect be the enemy of the good. So I, and there's some time pressure now. Committee has worked very hard. We don't really have a whole lot of time to fool around with this anymore. And I don't mean that you want us to fool around, but we need a pragmatic solution going forward, and we need to do it soon. I do think, you know, I read modifications required to remedy seismic resistance, modifications required to remedy accessibility deficiencies. I think what we're doing there is we're relying on their professional judgment about what we need to do, balancing our cost limitations and balancing the basic limitations of the building. So I'm going to read it in that light. I take your point that legally, I think we are legally required to do something with ADA. Honestly, I do. That's a whole other discussion, but, you know, to be responsible government leaders, we need to move forward with this project, we need to do the best we can. I think an honest effort was made by that committee, and...
So let's do the minimum for the ADA and for the seismic, but I keep hearing minimum, and I keep feeling like we're going way past a minimum.
Well, that's what I was trying to clarify...
Adding and alternating.
That's what I was trying to clarify earlier. I wanted to know where these alternates come into play, and I think I've heard pretty clearly that they'll be coming into play in a few months as the design phase gets to the point where they can be a little more specific about what they would propose, and we can decide at that point whether we want to bear the extra cost, if I'm understanding that correctly, so.
I think we also need to pay attention to this last clause, number three on page 21, about continuing through from the very beginning until the very end, so that if you sign on now, does this clause mean that you are engaged until the end?
Which one are you talking about? I'm sorry?
Number three.
Okay. I'm not seeing that here, I'm sorry.
Page 21. Page 21, number three, under additional terms of services.
Number three, okay, well...
First sentence.
Nothing controversial.
Yes, what William Glass explained, and previously at the October 5 meeting, was that they do not accept projects for which they cannot continue all the way through construction management, design, because they want to, I'm sorry, construction administration. They want to know that the project is carried out at the, with all the expertise and with all the attention that they put into their design, so that nothing is less than. They don't want to just turn over their design and allow it for, you know, to be kind of carried out with someone else's vision.
Okay, I get it now. I think he's raised a good point, since, so we're talking about you negotiating the final product contract with them, right? This is sort of...
That would be the motion.
And this will come back to you, the final, yes.
So I would just ask if you might consult with our attorney on how to word that, because I don't think we want to write ourselves out of every remedy we might have if something goes wrong and there was some fault on the part of the architect. I see what the architect's getting at, and it's not fair to hold them responsibility for a design that wasn't carried out. On the other hand, if they do some, if they were to do something that legally might constitute negligent, or, you know, negligence, professional negligence, something falling below the standard of care they should exercise, we wouldn't want to give up that right. So I think we could probably arrive at language that fairly gets at that. Am I...
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you for bringing that up.
I'd like to now make a motion, unless there's any more comment.
Good evening, members of the board, members of the community. As a supporter of efforts to improve the safety and functionality of the Kensington Community Center, I am concerned about the process for moving forward. One concern is paying $149,000 for architectural services for a construction project we may not be able to afford. I thank Bill Glass of Glass and Associates for his forthright estimate of construction costs for essential improvements addressing seismic, ADA, and energy code requirements. At the December 8 K P P C S D meeting, he estimated that construction costs will run $850,000 to $870,000. He also recommended a construction contingency. How much K P P C S D money is currently available to cover estimated construction costs? If available funds do not cover estimated cost, what is the plan for making up the difference? Thank you.
I'm happy to speak to that. So when you see the million dollar estimate, understand that that was an outlier, that was the outside that we thought we wanted, we could possibly go to. Our costs were estimated based on our seismic engineer's estimate and the estimate given by our ADA architect. Our ADA architect concluded that it would probably be about $180,000 to do all the improvements in the building. Our seismic engineer estimated about $350,000 for seismic improvements. We took those costs together. We estimate a 20% to 30% soft cost estimate over that, to pay prevailing wage, other things that could come up. That puts us about 650. We hoped that we could go further than that. We hoped that by contributions from the K C C, who you'll note is, if you see their website, or sometimes in the Outlook, is accepting funds on behalf of building improvements, and their contributions, that we would be able to get beyond. We hoped that fundraising, which has already begun on behalf of this building, over the next two years, would allow us to fund additional improvements. But we intended, hopefully, that the K P P C S D would be able to fund the basic costs themselves. We have approximately $207,000 already set aside. We have $158,000 coming in terms of a W W reimbursable grant. We will, of course, be searching for other grants and other available federal funds that would allow us to make such improvements. The other thing that we will be doing is coming to this board and asking for a chunk of funds from our, from a future budget to help meet our costs, because this building is a capital asset. It has been not, it has suffered from lack of improvement and lack of monetary considerations for about 30 years. It is part of our charge. We have three mandates to supply garbage services, or solid waste disposal, police services, and community services. And part of that is keeping our capital assets up and in working order, so that we can rent out the building, we can retain funds back into the community by park, use of the park. So that's how we'll hopefully get to our base costs, and then we'll be looking for outside funds, and I hate to say outside funds, because the K C C has already pledged a certain amount, that we're in discussion with them, so.
Hello, this is Lisa Corona. I'm Lisa Corona, Kensington resident. Well, first of all, again, thank you for moving this project forward. It's long overdue. I wish there was more money. I think hearing you, Michelle, just rattle off some of these numbers, about the $650,000 that's needed for the basics, that I assume does not include the $150,000 for the fees, which is now $800,000, which is getting close to the $1 million that's being planned for. I mean, that's the first time I've actually heard the construction numbers, and, you know, I haven't been involved in all the park committee meetings, but I think putting that down on a piece of paper would be extremely helpful, to let people know what's in sort of the baseline, and what are sort of like the bigger pictures after that, and the funding shortfall, I think would be really, really helpful, because that's the first time I actually heard that. So I just wanted to comment on a few things in the proposal. In the introduction of the proposal, it basically describes the building as built for youth, as the primary function, which we all know as the youth hut. And then it says, quote, "And over the years, the building's purpose evolved to include more adult uses, such as yoga, painting classes, and an occasional venue for private parties." I am concerned that the architects who actually made the, wrote the letter, that they understand that this building is also used as the primary public community building for everyone. This is used for all the board meetings, for the town hall meetings, for the public safety meetings. You know, it is the primary public building, and not just for yoga classes occasionally. So I think it's important to recognize that as part of the purpose of this building in a significant way. On the budget, the $1 million, it states that it includes all fees and permits, and I was wondering how much money we actually had in the bank for doing this. I'm still not clear, do we have the $650,000 that you just mentioned actually in the coffers? I'm not, just not clear on that. We do? Okay. Yes, it's my answer. Yes. So that's there, okay, that's good, because I, it wasn't clear how much we actually And then the, a couple of things that I don't see in the proposal, I don't see any meetings or any public presentations by the architects at any point, and I was wondering if that was already included in the process. Often, as part of the design development, or when you get close to design development, when those costs kind of harden on what things might actually cost, there would be a public discussion to kind of weigh the pros and cons of those things, and I didn't see any meetings or presentations as part of that. On the day-to-day project management, I saw no cost really included for that. I was wondering who's doing that. I know when they built the restroom building, Jack Griffith, who was very involved in that project, basically said that it was a huge time commitment to actually be there every single day during construction, to monitor what was going on and the quality of the work, and I didn't see that level of commitment in the proposal, and I'm just wondering who is designated to do that, if it's not the architectural architects who, on the staff or from the community, is really taking that responsibility. Then I was wondering who's putting the project out to bid. I know that has to come from the district, but the valuation of those bids, who's doing that, and determining if the low bid, which is a requirement of public agencies to take the low bid, to evaluate whether that contractor is adequate and competent to complete the work, and who is looking at that piece of it. And I also saw no civil engineer for any work outside the building, although I've heard many times that there has to be grading related to, at minimum, the parking stalls, and that could trigger some of the storm drain issues that are kind of part of that whole environment when you start to get into that grading. And I didn't know if any civil work, I didn't know if the architects were doing that work, or if, how that was actually getting done. And lastly, there are many references in the proposal that refer to the unknown possible requirement of a path of travel from the sidewalk or a bus stop to the actual facility, and I didn't know if there was any research that had been done to try to flush that out in advance of moving into this project, because that could be a huge, huge expense, if that was a requirement of the county. I just didn't know.
No, the path of travel, we've been assured by all the architectural firms, from the bus stop up to this site, is not relevant. There will be consideration possibly for the stalls out here, but not anything below.
So then it's just a civil issue on the grading and drainage for that whole area? Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Linda Lipscomb. First of all, Jim Watt, did I hear you say you anticipated having excess funds at some point in your commentary? It would be the first time that I ever heard that. I think we have you on tape saying that. Well, congratulations for getting to the point of seismic retrofit and ADA compliance. I share concerns as well about the identification of funds sufficient to complete the project. I can only go back some years ago with project on Mezur L, where there was pretty, a pretty resounding defeat on a bonding mechanism. What raised my concern was President Sheriff's Watts' statement that future budgets would be called upon to maintain this asset, to pay for this. And it kind of sounded like bonding or borrowing, and I would appreciate some explanation. I may be wrong on that, so I would appreciate some explanation regarding the funding mechanism. I don't think, to me, you haven't clearly identified it, but thanks for getting on with the project.
Sure. We've all, I've always maintained that I would do everything in my power to not ask for a bond. I don't see that there's community will, and I don't think that, we've seen in the past, that that is not an acceptable solution to funding this building, at least at the level that occurred during Mezur L. So I will be asking for future funds to be directed towards this building, as I will be asking for future portions of the budget to perhaps take a look at other improvements on capital assets that we have. This is part of what we do, it's part of our mandate. Am I seeking that we would lessen some other services in order to provide for this? No. I think that we are looking at our budget and finding the balance, and we are perhaps not procuring some items that in the past we would have thought twice about purchasing. Maybe we will not be getting a new police car this year, and instead, maybe we will be improving the bathrooms or renovating the kitchen.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize Board President Sheriff's Watt to negotiate a final contract, to enter, or to negotiate a final contract for Glass and Associates. With the amendments around the, the amount, the number of months that was, that they provide services, that they would be providing services through the completion of the project. Schedule item four.
My second?
Yeah, there's another thing, we're going to ask you to consult with Amer on the language about them not being liable for...
Absolutely, and I apologize, I have begun, actually, this was with Judith Prop at P L G, so perhaps she will be glad to give us, with legal services, yeah, so I'm...
That line we were talking about in, age 21.
Okay, however, okay. All right.
I want to make one comment real quickly before we vote. I wanted to note that they've estimated $1 million as the cost of this project. We don't know that it's going to be that, because we're going to put the construction out to bid, so it could be, if we're lucky, it could be a lot less than that. Of course, it could be a lot more also, so I just wanted everybody to understand, and myself to understand, that that $1 million could turn out to be very different, depending on the bids we get. That's their best guess. And I, you know, if it were a lot less than $1 million, I might think maybe they should charge a little less, I don't know. That's a pretty hefty fee they're charging, just a thought, you might broach that with them. Finally, I want to just mention the elephant in the room that nobody's mentioned yet, which is the huge cost we're going to confront when the upgrade or the demolition and rebuilding of the public safety building occurs. That is, could be as much as $10 million just to do that project, as I understand it, and that doesn't count the cost we might bear in having to find a home while that building is being either redone or rebuilt. And so we need to have that cost in mind, because that dwarfs the cost we're talking about with this building. So I, you know, I hope we have that in mind when this comes back to us for a vote.
All right, we'll take a vote. Do we need, because she's away, do we need to go by director, or can I say?
Sorry, Director Hessai made the motion, who was the second?
All right.
And he has a voice call out, would be held.
Okay. Do you want to go ahead, Lynn?
Yeah. Sorry. Director Hessai?
Aye.
Vice President Natoli?
Yes.
President Sheriff's Watt?
I'm going to abstain.
And Director Cordova?
Aye.
Director Welsh?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
All right, the motion passes for 0-1, I guess is how we report that out. All right, moving on to item B for new business. The board will discuss and potentially adopt Resolution 2017-4 authorizing interim general manager, Chief of Police Hull, to negotiate with the City of El Cerrito to provide R M S and Services of Records Management to the district. It's on page 23, and Chief Hull, would you like to introduce this item, or would you like me to? Perhaps, though, in a moment, you'll give us a little bit of an update on dispatch. Yeah. Go ahead, if you, I mean, if you want to... Go ahead, if you, I mean, if you want to, whoever would like to brief.
As probably all of you know, the contract that we have with the city of Richmond will expire on June 30th, and Chief Hull has been investigating alternates, and this is an ongoing investigation that he's been conducting since the fall. He's met with the sheriff that is willing to provide dispatch, but is not willing to brought, to provide two other essential services. So if we were to go with the sheriff for dispatch, we'd need to go to another nearby community for two other services, and those are the services that El Cerrito has expressed an openness to providing, and that's the public, the RMS and services that goes along with the dispatch records, plus also the services of records department. We separately, if you will recall, at our last meeting, had a resolution to authorize Chief Hull to negotiate with Ricky, with Albany, and that's also what we're doing. It's important that the officers in Kensington be in radio contact with an adjacent jurisdiction, and that's the reason why, right now, the two most attractive options for us are the sheriff plus El Cerrito, and then Albany, because Albany would be willing to provide all three services for us, and that's what we're in the middle of negotiating.
Could I ask a question? What, we, we're getting these services now from the city of Richmond, correct?
Yes.
And is re-upping with Richmond not on the table anymore?
It is up, it, it is possible to stay with Richmond, the problem is, we would not be on the same radio channel as either El Cerrito or Albany. And Chief Hull has an inquiry into Berkeley as well, but that's the issue with Richmond, because El Cerrito is no longer going to stay with Richmond either. They're pulling out.
Thank you.
I would just like to add that I will be speaking with the University of California Police Department also.
I'm sorry, usually I don't ask questions, but I'm sort of compelled to do so. I thought that there was a change to eBRIKs so that there was a unified radio frequency for all the agencies to participate in. What happened with that, or is this different?
This is different. E-BRIKs will allow us to communicate with different agencies, fire department, different, sheriff's department, from different counties. But what we're talking about is the main radio channel, where we would do a majority of our business. The only time we will be switching channels to some of those other agencies, multi-agencies, is in a case of an emergency.
I have a question, and it may be a very simple thing. Is this better?
Yeah.
Cool, okay. My question is, you refer to RMS services, does that mean record management services? Okay.
Any other comment? All right, I would like to...
Helpful to answer his question, her question?
Yes, she said, does it mean record management services? And the answer is yes. Sorry.
Well, there's two type of records.
Okay, go ahead, please.
RMS, record management services, is part of the computers, computer-assisted dispatch. Once dispatch creates, you call dispatch, they answer the phone, they're going to create a record. That record that dispatch creates gets stored into records management services. There's also the brick and mortar record building that has a clerk. So I just want to make sure you don't get those two types of records, RMS and record services confused. You're welcome.
Okay, go ahead, Vanessa.
Yes, the question is related to Albany's inclusion in Alameda County and our inclusion in Contra Costa, and it's not uncommon to cross county jurisdictions in Southern California. It's a little different to do that up here, and I'm wondering if, if any obstacles have been discussed with Albany about this, or if you have any overt concerns?
Well...
Or does that add to the cost, would be another question.
Could you repeat the question, I'm not sure everybody heard it.
The question was referring to, does crossing county lines for dispatch services incur any regulations, affect the cost, or change anything that we're negotiating?
Well, with respect to crossing counties, Albany did provide the dispatch service for Kensington for several years, and then Richmond began its operation, and for various reasons, Kensington switched. They were happy with the service for, that was provided by Albany, and there's really no clear understanding of why that switch was made, other than a group of cities went to Richmond. And apparently, El Cerrito was considering going to Albany as well, and they've made the decision to go with the sheriff. But according to Chief McQuiston, it's not an issue, and we've talked to others, and it doesn't appear to be any issue.
Thank you.
Linda?
Oh, sorry.
Pardon me if I'm not understanding this, but, so dispatch and the records management would be by two different entities?
If, if we went with the sheriff, the sheriff will not provide record management services, so we have to go somewhere else. If we went with Albany, all three needed services for Kensington would be provided by the city of Albany.
And have we had a cost analysis of whether those combined services with the two different agencies compare favorably?
That's what the resolution is all about, trying to get that.
Thank you.
And last, yeah, last month, Linda, we approved resolutions for Chief Hull to negotiate with the sheriff and with the city of Albany, so this month...
El Cerrito. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, Albany, last month. This month is El Cerrito, and that's what this resolution is, to try to get those cost estimates.
Yeah. We haven't yet prepared a resolution for UC Berkeley, but we're investigating all the agencies, well, I should say, Chief Hull has led the process, and Director Natoli has been, Vice President Natoli has, they have been at all these meetings to ascertain exactly what services each agency is offering, because it becomes comparing, we thought at first it would be a simple, kind of, oh, apples-to-apples comparison, but it turns out, based on software, based on the method of dispatch, based on their records, the way that they keep records, and the times that their records clerk works, you, we will be assembling a whole, ABC block of different items to ascertain what the final cost would be for each agency. But they all would like a resolution, because they want to know that we're actively considering them, before they use their staff time.
Do we, do we know whether UC Berkeley provides all three services? No, that's the initial contact that Chief Hull... So we don't know that. We don't know that, we don't know if they'd even be willing to offer that. We don't know if Berkeley would be willing to offer that, but Chief Hull is going to be meeting with them.
That meeting would just be a preliminary discussion.
Dave Spath, a quick question for clarification. Which systems can talk to one another? So in other words, you mentioned about the problem that if we went with one, we couldn't talk to the other. So if we join up with Albany, can we also talk to El Cerrito through the county? Or are we on two different frequencies that do not allow for that to happen? And if that's the case, I guess then is, which is the most critical? Which is, I guess, what you're going to decide. But anyways, could you answer that question maybe?
Yes, we would still be able to communicate with El Cerrito or monitor their radio traffic. It's all a case of just switching the radio to a different channel. But the main channel that we would be operating on, if we were to go with Albany, would be with the Albany channel, and it would only be the radio traffic between the Kensington Police Department and the Albany Police Department.
Okay, so, and that presumably may also occur if you went with the University of California system. They have their own frequency, if you will.
That's correct.
Complicated at best.
It was all supposed to be one. Years ago, they, they planned that out, and it didn't work. I propose that we adopt Resolution 2017-4, allowing the interim general manager and chief of police, or is designated, to enter into negotiations with the city of El Cerrito for the provision of records management services and services of, of records department.
Second. I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. It passes 5-0. Okay, moving on to the last item of the evening. We just prepared a brief calendar listing for board and, and some district committees. It seemed, it says on the agenda that you would, the board would consider approval. I think that seems premature, given that we actually haven't voted to approve a second, we have decided that we are not yet approved a second meeting a month, so I think that perhaps, could this be included in next month's consent calendar?
Or you can just provide information only with the caveat that if the second reading is approved, that this will stand.
This, okay. So you will see, there should already be a change, because of course, the January 26th meeting tonight is not a special, is not a regular meeting. But we wanted to give you a listing of, that the finance committee meetings would typically occur on the fourth Wednesday of every month. The park committee meeting led by, and I, I should say, that's not Park Grounds, but the park committee that is led by Director Hesse would be meeting the third Wednesday of every month, and so that folks could plan their calendars accordingly. So, yeah, go ahead, sure.
The KPP-CSD 2017 calendar for regular finance and park committee meetings, that's included in the agenda packet, is a good first step. But let's include meetings of all of our standing and ad hoc committees, and post it on the district website. Maybe we'd even talk to the Kensington Fire District about their meetings, include those as well. We could get really bold and invite the K groups to put, we could actually have a community calendar. And then we can get our new technology committee to create a calendar on the websites, we'd actually have a visual calendar with possible, possibly add links, we can get really fancy, but that would be, I think, really appreciated by the community and very helpful. Also, I would also find it helpful if you would post a description of each KPP-CSD committee with the, once it's known, the respective committee members, with the committee contact information. And also, to require that all open session KPP-CSD committee meetings be recorded and the, and the audio posted to the website as well, so everybody can know what's going on. Thank you.
Well, I think those are wonderful suggestions, and we should act on them. I, I apologize, I wasn't able to be in conference with, with every director about establishing a time for all their committees, and I didn't want to yet provide you, I think that we'll provide actually paper copies of months, but I didn't want to use the paper until we were, everyone had established. But I think that's absolutely, I would, I think that we should have all the K groups, we should have KIC and KCC meetings, as well as the fire board listed, so that you could know if, if your group would, you know, like to have a meeting, like to attend a meeting, or like to drop in, have a, an event on a particular evening, you could know in advance already that, that perhaps the building was going to be occupied, or you don't want to be in conflict with, with another group, so.
Maybe also, the Outlook could help us with printing things like that, or finding a way to post that.
I believe it's on the radar, keeps a calendar that cannot, of all of the, of all of the times that the building is occupied and by...
Great. That would be really, very relevant for us.
May I add something? The Outlook keeps a really good calendar of all of the organization's meetings on a monthly basis, I'm not sure we need to include them.
Okay, great.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Wonderful. All right, we've come to the end of the evening, so I'm going to make a motion that we adjourn. I will second. All right. All right, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, thank you for coming, we will see you February 9th. Delk? Delk? So wonderful.